Councilmember John Faust, do you recognize that we have a forum tonight?
I do, Mayor.
With the forum being present, I now declare this meeting open. And I'll ask our Development Director, Lonnie, if you will, please, to indicate for us.
Lord, as we just celebrated Memorial Day, we ask you to give you thanks for all of our veterans. Throughout the years, since we made it today before we can have meetings and conduct business for our city, Lord, I ask you just to keep a close with their families and watch over our military, watch over our rescue personnel, all unfortunate, our, all the people that try to keep us safe. Lord, I ask you for guidance, direction in our office to conduct business to all the people that's looking at Jasper. And as we move forward throughout the year, Lord, all these favored blessings in your name. Amen.
Amen. And I'll ask Dr. Stoney Crawford to introduce us in our pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Council, you have the agenda that has been presented to you. I've entertained a motion at this time that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Sure, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Have the motion in a second to adopt as presented the agenda. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries. Council, you have minutes in front of you from May 3, 2021, our regular council meeting, and May 27, 2021, the special call work session and public hearing. I've entertained a motion that we adopt these minutes as are delivered to you. So, the second.
Say it.
Have the motion in a second to adopt any further, any further information from council. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries. Item six under our agenda is a presentation, which is the 2020 audit for the City of Jasper. For those of you who don't know, that is quite an inclusive process every year and takes, it takes up considerable time by, by not just the person that's doing that or the company, but by our staff too. So at this time, I would ask Sam Latimer, CPA for Rushed Engineering Company, if you would come forward and present that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Yes, it is quite a cumbersome event that spans over multiple weeks. And so I'd like to thank your staff for helping us. They did quite a phenomenal job of giving us the information we needed. If we had any questions, they were right there to answer those. So Beverly Lindsey especially, I know that we hit them with so many questions and they responded. So thank you. Appreciate that. I've got several things in front of you here. I've got the report. First of all, it's just nice to be here in person and see everybody and see everybody's faces. So I've got this long report. I'm not going to go through that, but I'm going to give you the highlights in the presentation and you could follow along with me. I'm going to, I'm going to begin actually on page two. Page two is, goes over page one and two of the big report, and that is our audit opinion. And so that's one of the most important parts, probably the most important part of your audit, and that's an opinion from us. And so this first slide summarizes each of the paragraphs there. So the first paragraph really tells that the City of Jasper is responsible for its financial statements. The management is actually responsible for the financial statements. We are responsible for issuing an opinion on those financial statements. That's our job. That's what we're hired to do in all material respects of the financial fairness statement. We issued our audit on government auditing standards, and we issued those on the financial statements of December 31, 2020, and we had an unmodified opinion. Feel free to stop me as I go along. I'm going to go to slide two, or excuse me, slide three. There are two bases of opinion on your financial statements, and the first two pages, first two financial statement pages are the government wide statements. The government wide statements take all of your statements in the aggregate and adds those together. And you have a governmental component and a business type component. I'm sure you're familiar with what your governmental funds are versus what your business type, obviously your water, sewer, business type versus your government type. So on pages 14 and 15, that's the statement of net position, and that's the equivalent of a balance sheet in a for-profit entity. And so that takes all those together for the city as a whole. Then your statement of activities, which is on page 16, that's your income statement as a whole full accrual basis, whereas some of the governmental statements are on a modified accrual basis, this is a full accrual basis. And so on slide four, it's kind of a summary of what ends up being some of the most important numbers on that statement. It's called the statement of net position. And so on slide four, you can see your net position has changed over the last three fiscal years. If you look at the, I'll go through the columns, you can see that the net investment in capital assets is one of the largest numbers on the page there. That's all your infrastructure, all your roads, bridges, everything added together, net of debt that you owe on those assets, and accumulated depreciation. So that's your net number. Net invested is about $21 million to the city as a whole. Then you have your restricted net position, which of course is restricted assets that are, their outside sources tell you how you can spend that money. One of the biggest items in that column would be your Slos dollars. Slos dollars are restricted for capital. So you can see there's about $1.3 million in restricted net position. And then you have your unrestricted net position. That's basically everything that's left over, like retained earnings, we call it net position, about $2.5 million. All, if you add all those together, you've got almost $25 million, $24.9 million in total. So that's the net worth of the city as a whole. If you look at the, the last column, you can see it's revenues over expenses. You can see that there's quite a big change this year. Last year, you ended up losing about $580,000, and that was due to a lot of road infrastructure that you invested in that was expensed and not capitalized. If you see my first comment there, there was about $1.2 million of that last year. Well, you didn't have a lot of that this year. So that was really one of the big reasons that you have such a big swing. You end up with about a $900,000 swing to the positive, which is very good, very healthy. So you end up with about $320,000 in the black. So some of the reasons for that is the CARES Act. I'm sure you're all familiar with that the federal government gave away a lot of money, and I think the city ended up with somewhere around $200,000. And so that would be one positive swing. Even though we had COVID-19, sales tax went up. I mean, it was one of those crazy things. As an auditor, I was expecting it to go down. I was wrong. It actually went up. A lot of those sales transferred over to online, and everybody was going to the grocery store. And so sales tax did fairly well. And like I said, you had a large decrease in your expenditures. Any questions on that statement? Slide five is your general fund. You can see that your, I've got your revenues went up about 10 and a half percent, mainly due for a lot of revenues that I just noted. Sales and use tax, alcohol excise tax, both went up substantially, about 15% on each of those. Intergovernmental revenue, $208,000. That was your CARES Act money. That was a 100% increase. You hadn't gotten that before. So that was, that was a big. Building permits, building permits up 182%. So that's quite an increase, and we're seeing that everywhere. So as you know, building is going up. Fines and forfeitures took quite a hit. Your municipal court was not open as much due to COVID-19 restrictions. So had about a 23% decrease or about $47,000 decrease in your fines. I'm sure that will pick back up now the court is open going forward. Expenditures, you can see it's quite an odd year. They're almost exactly the same as the prior year, about $1,600, less than, than 1% increase. So it went up about $1,600. You did have a couple items I was going to note, which was financial administration went up, your economic development position increased. And so I know, I know you're probably well aware that I had a government agreement with counties, and so you're probably well aware that was going to happen. Street Department Personal Services went down about 18%. You had less overtime this year. I'm thinking you probably had some overtime with all the extra expenditures you had on some of your projects last year. Park and Rec Capital Outlet expenditures decreased. That's because you had a playground that you purchased in the prior year. And then if you look at bonus non-fund balance, that's one of the items that you, that you probably want to know, because that's what you have going forward for the next year. And if you can compare those two, it's always good to compare. You can see 2020 versus 2019, you can see that that's gone up about $300,000. I like to take that as a percentage of expenditures in the general fund. You can see that last year was about 34%, this year about 42.4%. So very healthy increase there. And then also, we break that out on a monthly basis. So if you didn't have any revenue coming in, this is how long you could last without any revenue, how you could cover your expenses. You can see that you've had a healthy bump from about 4.2 months to 5.1 months. So your cushion has gotten a little bit better this year. So that's, that's positive. And I've got a graphical representation on slide six. You can see the green line here is your expenditures, and you can see a very healthy blue line go over the green line this year. And if you, if you look at that number, it's about $243,000 is the difference between the blue and green line in the 2020 column. And so I would think most of that's probably due to your CARES Act money. Of course, there's other changes in there, but it's always nice to get free money. Any questions on the, on the general fund? Then you can see your fund balance go right along with your increase in change in fund balance. You had a large increase. Your total fund balance went up almost $300,000. The same with your undecided fund balance. It went up. You can see that as a graphical representation on, on slide seven. You've got your water and sewer fund on slide eight. Water and sewer revenues increased about 4.5%. Your water and sewer sales were down just a hair, about 1.5% for water and 1.9% for sewer. But your meter installs and sewer installs are up substantially. Your meter install is about 132%, and your sewer tie-in is about 233%. And the LEH revenue?
LECH.
LECH, sorry. I always have trouble with that. It's increased, I mean, I think this is like the fourth year in a row I've seen that increase. That has been very, very good for the city. And so that went up another 8.5% this year. Operating expenses increased about 11.5%. There was a, most of that was due to some professional fees, supplies, materials. A lot of that probably has to do with the cost of installing some of those meter installs and the sewer tie-ins that are in your cost of it sold. Personal services increased about 17%. That has to do with your pension. You increased your pension expenditures due to some extra benefits. You can see that that's, I know that that's something you guys decided to do, I think it was last year. And so you're seeing a bit of that here in your sewer fund. Any questions? And then I got a graphical representation of the same. You can see this is your water and sewer fund operating over the last three years. You can see your operating revenues bumped up just a hair, about 4.5%. Expenditures are up, and then you see your, your operating income is down just a bit. But remember that some of your capital, your tie-ins and your sewer are not in that number. So you would have to add those back to come up with that. So it didn't die out quite as much as that graph will represent. That's an operating number. And then on, on 10, slide 10, quite a big, big transaction happened this year. I wanted to make sure I mentioned it. You issued your 2020 Downtown Development Authority bonds, $3.6 million. You refunded five GFA notes, started the facilities project that's going to fund some future projects. You may have gotten started on those already. It costs about $93,000 to issue those bonds, and you got an amazing interest rate of 1.14%. So that will last over 12 years, and you'll be paying on that through June 1 of 2032. And then on slide 11, under governmental auditing standards, we don't only go through your transactions, but we also go through your processes. Want to make sure that you're in compliance with state law. And so we look at your internal controls, compliance with your grants, state law, things like that. We noted no material weaknesses. We did have one significant deficiency in the report. It has to do with a segregation issues issue. We've had that, that comment for the last few years, and that's really due to you just don't have the number of people that you need to properly segregate. And you have to do a risk-based analysis of whether that would be worth it or not. But we want to make sure we note that. But other than that, we noted no instances of noncompliance or any other matters that we were required to report on. And then on, on slide 12, these are some communications that I require to give to you as the governing board. So we're, we're playing, we have to plan and perform our audit to obtain reasonable assurance rather than absolute assurance on the financial statements as it pertains to being free of material statements. We examine on a test basis. We don't examine every document, but we look at evidence to support the amounts in the, in the financial statements. And then we assess the accounting principles that you use to create your financial statements. And we believe that our audit has done that. On slide 13. The significant accounting policies are in note one of the financial statements. If you ever need help sleeping, you probably read some of those. But those do explain how things are handled in the financial statements when it comes to estimates and those type of things. So, and like I mentioned there, there's a few estimates that we probably need to mention, and that will be accumulated depreciation. You just don't know how long some assets are going to last. And then you have allowances for doubtful accounts on some of your accounts receivable. Those are estimates. We just don't know, but it's the best we can do. Then on 14, corrected audit adjustments. Any adjustments that we thought needed to happen, or we sat down with Beverly, Lindsey, and we talked about those, and we ultimately agreed on all the adjustments that needed to be made. And so those were provided to management. There are no uncorrected adjustments. We, anything that was below materiality, we would pass on. But like I said, we ultimately agree with management on all the adjustments. And then we didn't have any disagreements with management. There were no difficulties during the audit. You've accepted responsibility by giving us a letter of management representation for the financial statements. And we didn't consult any consultants or any other accountants during our audit. It was just, just rushing company. Turn the page here. And like, there are some, a lot of times during our audits, we find other audit findings or other things that we'd like to comment on. I've provided a letter. Those are not significant enough for us to report in our report, but we give that to management. I'm not going to go through all the details of those, but I provide a copy of that letter to you there. If you have any questions, I mean, we won't forget to do this. And that is the, the end of my presentation. I hope it wasn't, wasn't too long.
Okay, so Beverly and Lindsey, you've given an inordinate amount of time to make sure that everything is balancing for our city.
That's right.
And I would be, if I, I will ask you for an opinion publicly, sure that the City of Jasper is doing what you think it needs to do, and if there are other things that we need to do that we're not doing.
Oh, no. I think the, the changes that have been made have been great, and I think that you are doing everything you can. You've got experienced staff that care about what they do and care about how things are around here. And so I definitely think that you're, you're in good hands. And I would, I would give you an A+ on, on that, that really.
See, I'm thankful for that. And I, I wanted these people who do the work to hear that. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. And I really mean it. I'm not, I'm not just saying that. I think y'all are doing a good job. You can, you can see that there's been a lot of progress from where you were versus, versus now.
Well, we all do this because we love it. They do it because they love it and they get paid. So we'll make sure, as I can say, right.
And if they ever need anything, then I think you know that we're, we're here.
We have, we have no issue. We call them.
That's what we're here for.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Sam.
Doctor, thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to be here with you. I appreciate it.
Any questions by?
Beverly.
Questions by council?
Just thank you for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Let me know if you need anything.
Stay off, if you'd like.
No, I just, I will say it's a pleasure working with Sam again. It's a pleasure to have Beverly and Lindsey. It does alleviate a lot of burden off of me. You're going to hear later on this evening that it is a group effort, starting with y'all, to finance from internal controls to the employees. And not to presuppose, but I do hope that later on in the business, there'll be a demonstration of this audit report, how we take the 2020, and being six months nearly into 2021, how does that translate into practical aspects of our internal workings and our employees. So thank you all.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Y'all have a great day. Brandon, do we need to accept this report so it can be released to the state?
I think unless y'all have any issues, I'd find to scroll in and publish it.
Okay. Item seven under old business, consideration of ordinance number 2021-11, request for rezoning parcel number 014015. And that particular ordinance has been withdrawn at this time. That's at 1370 West Church Street. And I believe that particular person or company will be coming back to us another time.
They will probably next month.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, for the, for the record, for anyone interested, it was withdrawn by the applicant due to the fact that they wanted to make some changes to their site plan. It is advertised for the June 22, planning a zoning commission meeting, June 24, mayor and council work session, subsequently a July 12 regular council meeting. So anyone who's following or interested in that particular item, those are the published dates.
Thank you. Item B is final consideration approval of ordinance number 2021-12 to amend the malt beverage portion of the City of Jasper alcohol excise tax. And we will ask Lindsey if she will bring this to us.
Mayor and council, this is just our second, I guess, reading, if I can answer that four. And we found some inconsistencies between our ordinance and the state ordinance. We're just asking that we come into compliance.
Thank you, Mrs. Lindsey. I've entertained a motion to approve this final consideration to amend the malt beverage portion of the City of Jasper excise tax. In a second, please. Have the motion in a second to approve any further discussion by council. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same. The motion carries. Item C is consideration of approval of the City of Jasper pay scale as amended, along with retention bonus of $500 per full-time employee, along with authorization to amend 2021 budget to reflect changes associated with the pay scale to address compression. And council members Jim Looney and Ann Snapey, we will ask you to bring this to us.
Council, if you remember, at our May 3 meeting, we requested staff look at salaries specifically looking at a minimum hourly rate of $13, looking at a retention or a advancement bonus, and also a, oh, bi-weekly payroll. After studying it, I think staff is going to recommend that the idea of a bi-weekly payroll, it's just not the right time. I agree with that as I hear that weekly payroll is a very good incentive to retain and attract new employees, existing and new employees. So I believe when they, when they make their report on this, that will be reflected. The work on the salaries, tremendous amount of work went into this over a long period of time, last 30 days particularly, where they can bring something to us for consideration. We have heard the audit report. We feel good about the sustainability of this move with salaries, and I request that it be approved by council after the presentation is made. Our part of it is, while we thank our financial folks for the good results in the audit, we also have to realize that it's our, it's every employee that is out there spending or not spending money, or spending, hopefully spending it wisely. And in order to get this kind of audit report, they, all the employees have done a tremendous job. So I hope that our actions will recognize this. Brandon, that's all I have.
Dan?
No, I just have the same thing. I mean, the employees have made a big difference. And, you know, it's a way of trying to give back to them and raise that we've been talking about, trying to do for, like Jim said, a long time. It's been in the works.
Our city manager, Brandon Looney.
Yes, sir. Well, this is one of those items that I'm pleased to report that we are in June of 2021. And when I began February of 2019, there was an initiative, kind of a directive, no less, of me to look at this particular item. I think it started well before my arrival in terms of the major adjustments. There has not been one council member that has illustrated to me that this was something they were opposed to. However, they have tasked me with the opportunity to do it at the right time, prudent with taxpayer monies. There have been situations with 2019 and 2020 that the timing, whether it's the TAVT, whether it's COVID, whether it's just continuing to make adjustments of best practices, that we have arrived at a point that staff feels comfortable that although we did not budget for 2021, any sort of adjustments to salaries. I believe the direction given by council even last year during the budget preparation of the nine public meetings that we had relative to the 2021 budget was to basically say, how did the revenue streams come in on 2021 with the first couple of quarters? How is the audit going to be presented to reflect the true-up of the 2020? All along the way, this is just a prudent way of conducting business and being good stewards of the taxpayer monies. And as a business with our enterprise funds, making sure that we continue to run and operate that as efficiently as possible. So I feel very comfortable that with Sam's audit presentation and with the staff that we have, all of the employees continuing to do Herculean effort every single day, doing more with less, acknowledging the fact that part of this particular initiative is to encourage and to incentivize and to retain the employees that we do have by making adjustments. We did have a meeting with the employees, as meaning that could attend after the May meeting, to explain to them that this initiative that we're bringing forward was intended to do a couple of things. One, adjust the pay scale. So your pay scale sets your bottom. This is the bottom. And there was a directive of $13. So right now, we had a bottom of 10. So there was going to be a 30% increase, we knew. How would that compress with other hourly employees? So we've made it very clear at the staff level to articulate that what we're trying to do is present you all with a pay scale that is a very broad range, this to that, minimum, maximum, the bottom of 13. Then what we would need to do Then what we would need to do is adjust our 2021 budget that we present to you all, if y'all favorably receive this, at the July 12th meeting, a budget amendment to reflect all the adjustments that would have to be made relative to all the individual hourly employees. So, what we're saying is, if you made $10 an hour, you're going to get bumped to the bottom of the minimum or a little more to help with the compression if we add someone. If you were at 13, then obviously you were not at 10, therefore you would need to be adjusted in some form or fashion. So, what we've tried to express to department leaders and to the employees is that everyone has the intent to win out of this relative to incentivizing them to continue to work the City of Jasper. So, didn't want to be too wordy, but that's kind of where we are. We have the general pay scale, that's for your consideration. Then there's the subsequent direction we would need, that we amend our 2021 budget. We'll prepare those for July 12th, so then that way we can go ahead and enact this initiative immediately. And if you favorably receive the retention bonus, that in effect is to continue to encourage employees that we have here to continue to operate. I do want to commend the employees again for doing a good job. The fund balance of 2020 was 310,00104. This particular initiative appears to be 311,500. That is purely a coincidence, I think it's a very good coincidence, that this is a reinvestment into our employees. And I think it's a testament to y'all's continued pushing us to make this happen.
So, now, let's talk about timing on this. You want tonight us to approve this for staff to proceed forth? And then will that require us to go another entire month before any action be taken?
Yes, sir.
Want to make certain that everybody understands what we do tonight as we do.
Correct.
Okay. Counsel, you have heard what has been told to us about the consideration approval of our adjusted pay scale, along with a $500 per full-time employee, that will be, that will serve as our retention bonus. Now, at this point, I would entertain a motion that we approve. So, and I will make a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Now, as for discussion from council on any item, on any items that we're discussing here within this.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the general statement. Brandon and I were reflecting on his interview this afternoon. This was actually one of the topics of our discussion during his initial interview here. And certainly it was on the list of, the long list of things that were presented to him about the day he showed up to start focusing on. Also, I'd like to thank the work of committee to plow through this internally in a fiscally responsible manner and come to this.
Appreciate it. We appreciate the work staff has done. So, before we vote on this, I want to read to you a message that I have received from our missing council member Kirk Raffield, who could not be with us tonight. I would like to extend a thank you to the administration committee for their work on salary adjustments. This has been a priority for the elected body for some time. It has come with its own obstacles. Paces has been the key. I support the adjustment of salaries for employees as we, the City of Jasper, remain committed to each member of our organization. More importantly, I say thank you to each employee who has remained steadfast and committed to the City of Jasper and to our community. The dedication you have provided speaks highly to your character and your commitment to your coworkers at our city. Thank you for showing up each day and providing exceptional services to our community. And I can say nothing to that that would only take away some. At this point, I would entertain a motion to approve. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries. And our thank you to city councilmen who are wanting to stay. Item A is New Business, consideration approval of adjusting City of Jasper ordinance numbers 2021-03 through 2021-11 to correct internal scribblers' errors. Brandon Looney, would you tell us about internal errors?
Yes, sir. So, all the good stuff I said, now I can tell you we screwed up.
Okay.
But not a bad screw-up, a good screw-up. What, that's a fancy way of saying that when we began this journey of continuing to record keep internally, we set forth, if y'all haven't called on, 2020 items that are dealing with ordinances or resolutions have 2020. 2021 will have 2021-01, or 2, or 3. 2022, guess what it's going to start with? So, I will tell you that 2021 is still relatively new. And so, in 2021, we had a, an ordinance that was to set the parameters of the elections. And from January to February, we had a special call meeting so that we can get the advertisement in time. So, we had a special call meeting, I believe January 14th or thereabouts, and that was utilizing 2021-03. So, in February's meeting, when we set the agenda, the ordinance was 2021-03, and it should have been 04. Subsequently, all the other ones go down. In consultation with legal, he assured us that because we are not changing any of the content, there's nothing, it's more of a internal record-keeping, that we would want to at least acknowledge it on an agenda, so that in the future, if someone comes back and says, well, in March, that one was 03, we changed it to 04. This is just an interim, but the actual ordinance in and of itself, the published contents is not going to change. So, with that...
Thank you, sir.
Probably more than y'all wanted, but...
Counsel, I'd entertain a motion that we approve and correct our internal errors.
Tell me.
And a second, please.
Sir?
Need to further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
All in aye.
Opposed, same. That is now fixed. Motion carries. Item B, consideration of ordinance number 2021-13, exempt amendments to the City of Jasper zoning ordinance, section 94-96 D1 and section 94-50, permitted uses for our central business district, wine specialty shop. Brandon, will you bring this to us along with Lonnie?
Yes, sir. And this is following up from our work session that was had. I know we had that week in between, so some of y'all may have forgotten that. But we did have a public hearing before PMZ and before you all, relative to this text amendment to the zoning ordinance. The two specific items is referenced that deals with penetration, which is essentially lighting the swords in the buildings. There had been an identified need to address just the penetration, not anything else. So, relative to buildings, the way that the particular item read was all building facades, meaning that all four sides would have to have at least 35% spaced out 20 feet each, covered in some sort of door, window to let light. It pretty well was determined that very few jurisdictions have that stringent of a requirement. In consultation with the committee, as well as our land use consultant, we arrived at the conclusion that the more prudent and probably more receptive penetration requirement would be on the front facade only. It does preclude them from not being able to do other sides if they so choose. So, it's just nothing to do with the facade, it's still got to go through the materials, but just the windows and doors. The secondary item of the text amendment pertains to the actual permitted use in a particular zoning district. Similarly to what we did last year with the brewery, is enabled, no sort of inconsistency, but in the central business district, it's silent on whether or not there would be an allowance for wine specialty shop. So, therefore, just to add clarity and moving forward, you add that into the zoning ordinance, and then it's a permitted use in that particular district. Obviously, if there's ever a need to reexamine that particular use, we could. But just in the immediate, those are the two text amendments.
Counsel, at this time, I entertain a motion that we approve the consideration of these text amendments to our ordinances.
Okay.
And a second, please.
Sir?
Have a motion and a second to approve. Text amendments to ordinance number 2021-13. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries. Item C is consideration of ordinance number 2021-14, amendment to the code ordinances of the City of Jasper regarding the sale of alcoholic beverages to provide for wine specialty shops. And Brandon and David will let me bring this to us. That would be our sentence. The city attorney, David.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council, thank you. Kind of piggybacking off of the land use, this one pertains to the Jasper code ordinances. So, you have the zoning ordinance, that is component of the code ordinances for the City of Jasper. The alcohol ordinance is separate from the land use. So, it is a requirement that if we are going to incorporate any sort of new changes to the alcohol ordinance, i.e. allowing some sort of wine specialty shop, we would need to amend that. Procedurally, this would be the first occurrence since our change to the charter that it would only require a one breed. So, this is an ordinance. So, with respect to the specifics, I will defer to legal, but from a practical application, this would enable an entrepreneur or applicant or business persons who's interested in opening up a wine specialty shop, which is, you can have some retail wine sales, consumption on premise, craft beer, other merchandise. And so, it's kind of a destination economic development draw to your downtowns. So, typically, they are central in the central business district. So, with that, I would, Mr. Siphon, talk a little bit about the specifics.
Thank you, Brandon. At the work session, we went over the zoning text amendment for the wine specialty shop. As Brandon just indicated, this is the amendment to the city's alcoholic beverage ordinance to allow a wine specialty shop license under the ordinance. And the reason for that is that the wine specialty shop is sort of blend in that it's contemplated that they would do package sales, you know, wine by the bottle, that people could buy and take home, and that they would also have buy the drink ability that would allow people to go in and, you know, buy a glass of wine and see if they like it, to want to buy a bottle, and also to be able to sell craft beers. And, you know, if you get a chance, you can compare the zoning text amendment to the alcohol ordinance amendment, and you'll see that we have them be consistent with one another. One thing that council's always brought up is that, you know, you didn't want a pure bar in town, that you wanted basically restaurants to have the ability to sell alcoholic beverages and have that blend of food plus alcohol by the drink. The wine specialty shop, due to the nature of what it is under this ordinance amendment, would not have to have food sales. But right now, the percentages would be that they would have to have package sales that account for 60% of their gross revenue. And then the other revenue would be the buy the drink revenue, including in that gross revenue of 60%, it would be things like, you know, they could sell wine paraphernalia like an aerator for red wine, and wine glasses, and things of that nature. It also allows them to basically have a cigar shop and a smoking room, smoking room. They can serve in the smoking room, but they got to have a separate tasting room for those people that don't enjoy cigar smoke. You know, they got to have that room be separate. So, this ordinance amendment to the alcoholic beverage ordinance then tracks what we did under the zoning ordinance. There is a blank that needs to be filled in, and that's, you know, what license fee do we want to charge? And that may be a question for Lindsey. I'm given to understand that there's been discussion of having a license fee of around $1,500, which is consistent with some of our other license fees. But we do need to fill in that blank, because since we only have to do one reading now, if you pass it tonight, and it's in effect tonight, so I wanted that blank filled in. And Lindsey, I may have stepped out of bounds on the license fee. Hopefully, I got close.
You're right.
But if you have a recommendation, I'm sure the council would like to hear that on the license fee.
I'll ask you to do that.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Siphon. Right now, some of our flat fees for like a brewery and stuff like that, we do have them set at $1,500. So, I would recommend that we stay on a flat rate for those, since they will be selling by the drink and by the package in one place, so...
Counsel? Discussion?
Counsel, reading? Fifteen seconds?
Yes, consistent.
Make a motion, we said to be at 15 to 100?
Okay. And we agreed with that motion to approve this amendment to the alcoholic beverage sales to provide for wine specialty shop. And then we'll have it all along.
Okay. 1,500.
Okay. Have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Do you further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Lindsey. Item B is consideration and approval of resolution number 2021-03, rescinding the use of mask or face coverings in property owned and leased by the City of Jasper. And we're going to ask our city attorney, David Siphon, to bring this to us. David, what do you think?
Yes, you should have in your package a resolution that's calling for the rescension of a September 14th, 2020 resolution by the council that arose due to the COVID-19 pandemic. In order to keep members of the public, staff, elected officials, and everyone that had business with the city as safe as we could, we required mask-wearing in public facilities, including city hall and other areas. As we all know, the vaccines have been very effective in driving down positivity rate for COVID-19 illnesses. And Governor Kemp, as of May 31st, 2021, by his state emergency orders, has rescinded most of the safety requirements such as mask-wearing, except for certain at-risk populations like in nursing homes. So, in recognition of that... So in recognition of that, and in recognition that the CDC has said that with vaccinated people, that we can begin the process of going back to normal, this resolution would rescind the prior resolution requiring mask wearing in City Hall and other public facilities. I would say or point out that there's an exception in the resolution, which is for the municipal court building. The state judicial system through the Georgia Supreme Court issued an order again today. It was the 15th emergency order, and it runs through the end of the month, which is June 30 of 2021. But that 15th order basically indicates that the chief justice is contemplating that that would be the last state judicial emergency order. So come our court date in July of 2021, the court, the Jasper Municipal Court, wouldn't have to mandate mask wearing and all the other safety precautions. But from today to the end of the month, basically the June session of court, they still got to continue that. So this resolution, I think, is good news for all of us and will make everybody's life a lot more convenient. I would note that if COVID rates go back up again and if there's a surge, then of course the council will have to look at, you know, do we need to reinstate safety precautions? But hopefully, that won't happen. But tonight, I would recommend to you that you approve and pass the resolution and get us once more step back to normal.
Thank you, David. Counsel at this point, I entertain a motion to approve the consideration and approval of resolution number 2021-03, the city to use masks in property owned and leased by the City of Jasper, with the exception that was noted.
So.
And a second, please.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the public discussion by counsel. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion is carried. Item E is consideration and approval of resolution number 2021-04, acceptance of the recommended contractor of LCS and Associates LLC for the work on the damaged raw water and finished water lines at Cove Creek for a contract of $111,220 with a not to exceed purchase order of $125,000. Brandon, if you will, please, and David Hall. Counsel, David.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor.
He's been really quiet lately, Brandon, sir.
You woke him up.
Yes.
The, you may recall that the end of March, we had some pretty bad storms, acts of God that probably caused half a million plus dollars damage to some of our assets, specifically our water system as well on Jeanette. Believe it or not, this is the most expedited schedule we could do that literally on Monday following the Friday event, we had the engineer out here beginning site survey and looking. So if you think about that as the following Monday at the end of March to June the 7th, that we now can consider the bids, that was an expedited that we can give. I say that only to say that they have cut a month off from advertising and they, they advertised this to emergency shortened bid. We did get three, I believe three, the bid tabs are in your packet. They did recommend by way of resolution to approve the LCS and Associates at that contract amount. Staff is merely asking for that approval. And then whether it's at this particular juncture or the last, next to last item with discussion weather related, I kind of go through the real list of timeframe of when we would actually begin work if this is approved tonight.
Thank you. David, any further word on that?
No, we're just, we're still operating on the temporary bypass that people can probably see as they're going across the bridge, just the line laid across the top of the bridge on the coast. It's fine now, but probably come winter time, you know, power was often made become a problem with freezing, but totally a good idea to get a more permanent situation. The county thankfully is having us on the east end right now with that line washed out. That's the only source we have right now. Piggins County Water Authority is supplying this water from the Big Creek side. So this finished water line will, you know, bring us back into where we can supply our customers back in the grandeur area, which has been supplied by Piggins County by that way.
Thank you. Counsel at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consideration of resolution number 2021-04, the amount of a PO not to exceed $125,000. So. And a second, please.
Second.
Motion is second to approve. Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries. Item F is consideration and approval of resolution number 2021-05, acceptance of the recommended contractor, precise contractor ticket for the repair and painting of Lily's circle elevated tank for a contract of $78,180 with a not to exceed PO of $85,000. Brandon and David again.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, counsel, this was a project that had been identified last year, if we recall, when we had looked at refunding, restating some of the GFA debt into the longer interest loan, and we capitalized on some liquidity. This was a project that we had wanted to get done. So this is kind of a, you know, byproduct of that. The precise contractor, similarly to the previous item, turnt seat engineers has handled all the registered bidding docs and whatnot. This was the full process. The bid tabs are attached. We did get five bidders. I will tell you that with the exception of this low bid, all the rest of them are in the six-figure range. I would be, and I think turnt seat would be a little hesitant, but precise is the entity that did the forestry tank. So we at least know that they are qualified, they are in state, whereas the other ones were out of state, therefore I think the cost for the increase. So this is the 78, 180, not to exceed 85.
Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number 2021-05 with a PO not to exceed $85,000 for the painting of the Lily Creek Elevated Tank.
So moved.
And a second, please.
Well, second, yes, sir.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion is carried. Item G is consideration and approval of the purchase of a sludge de-watering press for the Jasper Water Pollution Drill Plant and to request reimbursement from USDA Rural Development in the amount of $400,000. Belt press to be purchased from Charter Machine Company for $357,856 with a 12-week lead time of delivery. This is a pretty precise question. So I'm going to ask David Hall, who has brought this to us, if he will come forth and explain this to counsel.
Evening, Mayor, counsel. What we're dependent on this is, is on our sludge de-watering. It's through our USDA loan, which is taking forever. We're getting to the point on some of our applications at the wastewater plant where we're running out of time. So this is with the sludge, that's one of the processes that, and as me and Brandon have talked, there may be other processes that we have to bring before y'all, maybe coronation, the dog oxygen, and others that we're just running out of time on, that we can't wait for USDA, the growth is continuing to come, people are continuing to come. And as the community grows, we've assumed that this loan through USDA would already be started on construction and would be moving forward. But it's not. So at this time, which our engineer assures us that we will be reimbursed this money through the USDA loan grant once it takes place, we would like to jump ahead and go ahead and get this belt press to work and help us with our sludge de-watering process because we're out of room with our solar drying beds and ductors, which we're doing now. It's just gotten to the point where we're not going to be able to keep up.
So. Counsel, questions? Counsel at this point, I entertain a motion to approve the purchase of the sludge de-watering press in the amount of $357,856. So moved.
And Mayor, can I suggest to you, we did the motion tonight, but I think we may need a written reimbursement resolution.
I think that we decided we're going to do this, whether they do it or don't.
Right, right. But at least to have a shot at getting USDA to reimburse the cost of it. I'm saying vote on it tonight, and then we'll document it at the next meeting with a reimbursement resolution.
That would work out quite well, David. Okay, so where was I at? Do you entertain a motion to approve? And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Item H is consideration and approval for a 60-month commitment in the TASER 7 certification plan with Axon for the Jasper Police Department for an amount not to exceed $65,000 with a one-year investment of $6,323.06. So Brandon and Chief Dawkins, if you will, please.
Assistant Chief Dawkins, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Let me look. Chief Lee Lefton.
I felt, I felt Chief Love's eyes periodized.
Chief Lee Lefton. I'm covered.
So.
I'm sorry. That's my arrow.
Mr. Mayor.
The better's life, I say, right inside.
Well, I love what.
Our chief over there, sir.
Roper.
I could not see that happen.
I know. Roper, you left at the.
Oh, man.
Close enough to view town, I'm sorry.
Story of my life. So with, with that, Mr. Mayor, I would, the only, the only qualifications I really have to speak on this subject is just to kind of lay it out to the elected body and to the public as a whole. Whenever we talk about anything relative to our operations, public safety especially, what we're trying to do is make a commitment that whatever we do, we don't set it and forget it. I think what you'll hear is, Major Dawkins, it's easier for me to just say major. It is in fact, is that in 2011, we began the initiative of tasers. And I think what you'll hear is, we're in 2021, and that's about the extent of it. So although the total overall cost may seem a little shocking, I do not, because I think the plan that the police department has set forth with this vendor is practical, allows for a better use of cash flow with squashed monies. And relative to their day-to-day operations and what this means, this is a tool in their physical tool belt that if we're going to continue to operate in this manner, we're going to have to continue funding that appropriately, just like the bulletproof vest last year, the turnout gear, all the other initiatives that we're trying to do in all the departments. So just laying it at that, I'll let Major Dawkins just kind of talk a little bit about what this is.
Who is his actuality, our assistant chief? Thank you.
You really didn't miss it. Good evening, Mayor, counsel. So I guess in front of you, y'all have, what we're asking for is the TASER 7, the come-out in 2018, the pro TASER. Back in April 5, 2011, we bought our first TASERS, the X26, if we still could have stayed. With the proposed commitment, we would be getting 20 TASERS, 20 TASER 7s, 24 TASER batteries, which are rechargeable, 20 holsters. It also comes along with, each year, we have, I know, we'll get TASER training cartridges so we can train, which we haven't been able to do. And then we also get six cartridges for each TASER, kind of with this package. We also get online training, which is pretty popular these days, something we haven't had since 2011 when it come to TASER. Also, my big thing was with the batteries, it's a good thing with this new TASER 7, they are rechargeable, we get a docking station. So instead of me getting called in the middle of the night that my TASER battery don't work, and I have to come back in and buy the TASER battery, the whole thing, looking at 60 minutes, probably instead they can just walk over, grab one, and replenish their TASER. There is the other option of the X26P, which is kind of like going into the iPhone store and asking for a iPhone 4 right now. It will be outdated within the next couple of years. So the TASER 7 we're asking for is viable option, it's going to be well for the officers and protection.
Assistant Chief Dawkins, I want to ask one question.
Major Dawkins.
So this is going to go over a six-year period of time?
Five years, I believe, five years.
Okay. And during that particular time, then these TASERS wouldn't work for that period of time. We wouldn't have to get rid of them before we had exhausted that.
There's a maintenance that comes along with the package of TASER. We do have a problem, we send it back to them. If we have to use the cartridge, it is replenished at no cost. But yes, the maintenance comes along with it.
Okay.
We, we all went through our training and completing TASER, except for Mayor Lawrence, so I'm making sure that we.
We don't continue that exception, though.
You don't want to be that.
There are no circumstances. I don't want to be shown.
I don't either.
Okay, so counsel, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve this 60-month commitment in the TASER 7 with 20 TASERS, 20 holsters, and 24 batteries that are rechargeable plus docking stations.
So moved.
And I'll take, have motion and a second. Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Go give it. Item I is consideration and approval of engaging the services of Ronald Huffman with Wood Consulting for the submitter of a TAP application with GDOC concerning Stigall Drive and Brandon and Green Soles will let me bring this to us.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, counsel, you may recall that there have been some discussions this year relative to Stigall Drive and kind of the desire for staff to continue doing some due diligence with respect to this corridor, identifying what we're going to do relative to certain businesses, the community, how it fits in. There had been an initiative created some years back where a firm had looked at traffic flow, and although it was a pretty comprehensive approach, there was not a great deal of information readily available about Stigall Drive specifically. So although in your packet, there are some photos that, believe it or not, there was some benefit to having some relationships and contacts with persons way more talented than myself for me to reach out to after the discussion had a few months ago. some benefit to having some relationships and contacts with persons way more talented than myself for me to reach out to after the discussion had a few months ago. So all of the photos and the iterations before you were created pro bono, we did not spend a dime. Mr. Huffman is a very talented individual who I hope that as he engages, if y'all allow him to, in this community, he'll be a very valuable asset for not just the city of, but for the whole community. But what we're wanting to do is take what's before you and expand it in a TAP application to GDOT. So Mr. Green will kind of talk in a moment about some immediacy with some, some plans. What this TAP application is, you may recall the transportation enhancement projects from GDOT. TAP is essentially taken over as that one or two. So if you've ever experienced doing T projects, they may happen, they may not. Just quite candidly, it is a grant, there is a million-dollar initial or minimum requirement. The approach that Mr. Huffman and I had spoken about in the committee was expanding the Stigall to incorporate Reinhardt, to incorporate the parking bathroom area, the old jail, the cabin, and the park area, and try to get some funding that we know we had not specifically identified, other than kind of piecemeal. So I think the approach we want to take is if you're receptive to them putting in this application, there'd be a twenty percent required match, which if, of course, we can get this in by the end of July, if there's any sort of resolution needed, we can adopt then. I didn't see anything in the requirements, but our initial investment would only be a twenty percent match, which in effect was, be basically what we're going to be spending anyway in some form or fashion at Stigall or at the bathrooms or at the park area. So just wanted to bring this formally to y'all's attention, and Mr. Green, I think he had been conspiring with Mr. Huffman, even though he does not know him.
Sorry, I averaged what they're doing.
I do think that it is prudent for him to kind of express what's been going on, because I think it all ties in really well with what the city wants to do and what the community wants to do, business and economic development. So, Mr. Mayor, if you could, if you will, please.
Okay. Should I start with the grant from George Power? Is that okay?
You can, and they do have your, the information that you sent me.
Right, the drawings, so the, the, a bit of a joke, because I, Mr. Huffman's drawings and my little ugly sketches are shockingly similar, but, which of course means Stigall is pretty natural for what it wants to do. I mean, there aren't a lot of options you need to do to be sensitive to the place. First off, let me go back. In a phone conversation back about November of last year, George Power and I were talking about this and Mrs. Elise Davis, and we got a twenty-five-hundred-dollar grant from George Power to do something lovely at Main, preferably at Stigall, since I told her this was the excitement area of, of the Main Street. And so we got that money, and I understand it is sitting there waiting on an opportunity to be spent. The, what I'm proposing and what I'm concerned about is, is, is to act now, move, move quickly, because it is the season to sit outside and, and not the dead of winter. If you see the last two drawings on your handouts, you'll notice what those are called is tactical urbanism. Tactical urbanism is very simply nothing permanent, mostly movable and completely reversible. So if we do anything and you don't like it, it can be gone in minutes or hours at the worst. But the interesting thing here is, is I'd like your blessing and encouragement to spend some of that money. My budget was about two thousand of the two twenty-five-hundred dollars, and then Amberly Godfrey Chamber told me, that's silly, because we can get most of that donated. I've even got a little bit of money left over from the picnic tables at Perot Park, and we can put that in there immediately, but other people would donate, participate. Penley Creek says they're all in, whatever we need for manpower, et cetera. Rumor has it, I might get some help from the man in the red shirt back there in the back, who is your chairman of your downtown development authority, Jack Dunn of the Chamber, and we want to move forward. What we want to do is, with your permission, you know, the second drawing is painting out the center line of the street and mimicking his plan, creating one lane and buffering the picnic tables and the sitting areas. What I want to do is permission to take the first two parking spaces. If you know that street intimately, you know that there is three-quarters of the parking space at the corner of Penley, and then a parking space, which is right in front of their door. And so I'd like to paint those out in Pickens High School green, so that they're very obviously not part of the street anymore. We get some picnic tables, we put in there, they will be hyper practically adjusted back to level, so that they will not be usable by anyone else unless they definitely back apart. And so they'll be level on a sloped street, and we put various forms of either half-barrel size protection to buffer them away from the street. I like the idea of a galvanized water trough to buffer the head ends, and if I paint to one lane, just like he was going to narrow the street to one lane at the foot, we would use a couple more down there to narrow the street down there. Once again, it's all this. Paint would be something along the lines of house paint, which house paint does not like to be painted on asphalt, which means oil will eventually throw it off the ground, easily removable. So my, my request is that you say yes, go get them, and we will hopefully have this done as soon as possibly the end of the month, I believe. But my goal would be to have it ready by the end of the month. The only follow-on after that would be is if Penley Creek or someone else would like to come to you and get some form of blanket permission to temporarily close the street. If you look to the first of the two drawings, you'll see my sketch of what it would look like and take to close the street from, say, six to nine o'clock at night or whatever. And that amounts to a total of a grand total of maybe a dozen orange cones and two soft horse type barricades with banners on them. And that would close the street safely, effectively, and then they could have a...
Were you talking about for a special event?
Whatever, office, whatever, but that's up to y'all and whoever wants to do something. It could be special, it could be every weekend if you want to. Or allow Penley the opportunity, if they've got something going on. If Angry Mamas and Penley want to do another auction in the street, somebody wants to put a trailer at the foot of the street, have some music, that's up to, you know, your blessing, whether you blanketed him to approval or not, but that's another action on another day. I just want permission to do this on the street.
Does it give Penley their egress? Where are we, where are we standing at, Brandon?
They already have it existing, egress, ingress.
Permanent?
Well, it's the, it's the agreement that we have with it.
By, by the way, interestingly enough, my little layout shows taking that parking space in front of the egress, which gives permanent walk-around around the sidewalk, and on the permanent drawings, that probably needs to be mirror imaged so that you could take out that parking space, because they're showing a parking space right against the, and a sidewalk there, which...
So now I've heard about the twenty-five-hundred dollars.
Right.
What do you think it would take to do everything that you want to do?
The gross, if I get no support at all, about two thousand. Now, I'll be honest with you, picnic tables went up twenty-five percent last month. They went from a hundred and twenty dollars to a hundred and fifty. So my budget got pushed by at least a hundred and eighty dollars, but I was still in below two thousand before that. If I did any donations at all, and I think I will, then I'm assuming by half that, you know, I, I won't predict, I have no idea what the generosity of people will be for this effort, but I, I absolutely am captive to the donation from George Power, no matter what.
Okay, so this is going to break down in a couple of ways. First, let me ask for discussion by counsel on, on both points of this that we have.
Well, I'd like to say that I think it's exciting to start having some little projects come up in town. For quite some time, we've worked on bathrooms on the north end of town, that's under, at least in progress, you know, it's been delayed a little bit. You know, on the south end of town, I think based on some conversations I've heard today, there's going to be some action down there. So I think this kind of splits the difference. Seems to be very flexible, seems to be relatively inexpensive. I'm sure we'll hear all about that, but at least it gives that area some life, which has been demonstrated during the G-Fest and other functions we've had there that people like having that closed off, and I think it's exciting.
How much would be if you used the asphalt painting tools?
I've never priced any real asphalt paint, because I'm not, my, my proposal is strictly temporary substances, so if I, if I use an exterior grade house paint, I would hopefully get a year's use out of it.
Juan, would you have any idea on that?
Well, we had, you know, some stop bars and a four-way stop painted and a couple of parking places hosed out, and that cost the gentleman I used, Gordon Cannon, each artist five hundred dollars. So I would estimate from what I've heard they have discussed, five hundred to a thousand dollars to paint it in asphalt paint. Now, that's some speculation.
Well, if we're going to do it, we're going to do it.
Yeah, but I would think you ought to jump up and do something, when you're talking about a temporary situation, and then if it works out, then we can budget to permanently do something. But I think the temporary for now is probably the best way to go and see how it works.
Well, one of the most beautiful things about this whole tactical urbanism idea is if something needs to be adjusted, or it's wrong, or we need to add or subtract, you're done in hours or, or at the most, you know what I mean, it's, you make the adjustment. I mean, if we need to put a handicap parking space somewhere that becomes an issue with the city, then we get out of the way and let that happen. You know, it's just that simple.
Brandon, we're just still waiting on the drawing from...
Hi, I love the idea of concept, the, the idea of going with something temporary right now appeals to me. It's something that we can grow with, or it can grow with us, and temporary just seems to make sense to me.
Okay, and I, I agree with that. I just don't want you to get out there and not have, you know, not have enough money to do what, what you need to do, even on a temporary basis. You know, that's my only, my only question would be, we need to take maybe a thousand dollars out of, out of hotel motel tax and, with this effort.
Well, technically, I have up to ten thousand, but, but...
Your party.
Yeah, I don't...
Don't be telling what it is.
My budget just got expanded.
I think, I think the idea was to have the buy-in from the elected with regards to the TAP application, the buy-in to Green's idea, because I think that goes hand in hand that as Mr. Huffman continues his application for the next month and a half, and even if the application is not funded, my goal is to still utilize that pro bono and then commission a paid work from Ron that will then translate into saying, this is what's working, this is what's not, here's taking a concept, take it to construction, and here's the cost of it.
If you think about it, we get a season from now till it's too cold to sit outside and to learn experience and find out what people like, what they don't, what works, what doesn't, and then that informs us to not waste, and that lowers our chance of making a mistake in the future.
Can we ask the, the safety personnel as well?
I want to make sure that we don't cause them any issues with, because I know that was a big...
Chief Police just left, so...
Chief Dawkins, could you tell us? Okay, Robert, you've got the big fire truck, so...
We can just block it for the last one.
Are you happy, can I get through there if they close that?
Twenty-foot?
Yes.
Because I know we had discussed that before when we talked about doing some of the reduction or doing some of the closing, I just want to make sure that...
Yeah, if I've got twenty feet, I'm good.
Okay. Then y'all got no issues. Go ahead, Jack.
And just to let you know, I've already talked to Steve and talked to Greg, and both have said it was fine. Can I make a, I'll just state, I'm...
Sure.
First of all, counsel, mayor, thank you, Brandon. We've been talking about this for a long time and trying to help people in our downtown area. We have a lot there already, it's just sitting there waiting. The excitement's there, we just need to continue on and do with this. And there's other monies out there besides what Brandon's talking about, there's been people coming to me and Ed sitting there to give some money as well, so it's just, it's just waiting for y'all to say yes or no, so, thank y'all.
Thank you, Jack. Counsel, I would at this point entertain a motion to approve the engagement of services of Ron Huffman for consulting of a TAP application with GDOT on Stigall Drive, and asking Brandon to ensure that, that Mr. Sutton's has adequate funding to agree to whatever temporary measures that might be needed that we have not foreseen. So, and a second, please.
Second.
Motion and a second. Would I agree any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I think this is going to be outstanding. Can't wait to see what's, what's going to be done.
It's going to be fun.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack, because Jack made this two years ago, three years ago?
Four years ago.
Four years ago?
The other thing, if y'all think back from all six, when all of us were young kids and playing out, where was the main place that was, it was right there in that area? My mother and father stayed at one and two o'clock in the morning cooking hot dogs and hamburgers, and that was it.
I remember. We've done better. We're going to do better still. Okay, progression right along now, James, consideration of a special event carriage house. Lindsey, if you will, bring this to us, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Carriage house submitted a special events application located at thirty-four South Main Street, uh, North Main Street, I'm sorry. They're just wanting to serve alcohol on September third from five to nine p.m. during the G-Fest. I don't know if that's show and shine or what's going on, but...
Okay. Thank you, Lindsey. Counsel, I'm having a motion to approve this request for carriage house for that particular date and time. Second, please.
Second.
Motion is second to approve. Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Foe saying? And that motion is granted. Item K, listen, Senator. Consideration of changing our fuel cards to the state contract holder, which is WDX. Lindsey, what's up with this?
I learned from Brandon. Okay, so as we all know, our fuel shortage that we had not so long ago, right now, we currently, we only fuel at QT, except for the fire department, and they fuel at John's Hole. What, what we're looking at is to have the opportunity to, we're already with WEX, WEX is a holder through QT, so we're not leaving WEX, we would just look to change our program to where our main fuel station would still be QT, but this would allow us to fuel at like ninety-five percent of the fueling stations across the United States, which would be good. Some of our department leaders, and they've headed south, I think once they get past Macon or Dunham, there's not a QT, so they're having to fuel other ways or whatnot. So the state offers a, a program which has rebates and tax exemptions and everything on any of the gas stations we fuel at, and then QT, they have a universal card that's only rebates at QT. So I'm proposing if we could just switch over to the state contract, swap our cards, so we'd have more flexibility of where to fuel if we do have any shortages.
Thank you, Ms. Lindsey.
Thank you.
Counsel, I'm having a motion to change our fuel cards to the state contract holder, WDX. And a second. Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Foe saying? Motion carries. Thank you. Item L was consideration of a special event long table on Main for Saturday, and we have changed the date here to September the eighteenth, if you'd have voted for you. And I'll ask Ms. June Ash to bring this to us. Good evening, June, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Very well, thank you.
So we want to have our annual long table on Main on September the eighteenth. This will be our tenth annual event, and it'll be in front of the portion of the street in front of sixty-one Main.
Tenth event now.
But it'll be locked off from...
Yeah, it'll be locked off from fifty-three to...
Fifty-three on the north, on the south side.
And we'll shut it down at noon, and then we should be out of there by midnight. The event will be over at eleven, but it will take us a little while to get there.
And I understand you're going to hire some local officers to make sure that...
Oh, yes, yes. And we also wanted to see if we could possibly hire some of the city workers to do the lots like they did in twenty nineteen. like they did in twenty nineteen.
I'll let you talk to Brandon another time about that.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve special event, uh...
Long table?
Long table for September eighteenth.
A motion second to approve long table on September the eighteenth. Any further discussion by council?
June, can I have a couple of questions? What is our theme?
Uh, roaring twenties.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Roaring twenties.
Well, we were going to do twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty, but we were going to do it, but that didn't happen, so...
The theme is?
Sixty-one Main's carrying and entertainment stuff in the area.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I lost myself.
That was discussion, so...
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both saying? And motion carries. And Brandon, we have finally gotten down to discussion of what's going to be the event and the impact of this.
Yes, sir. In your packets, this is just kind of an update that EXP has continued to work on the Jeanette Drive design. Survey is complete, so we do hope that within the next sixty days or so, there'll be a design to drop the bid. And the immediate, David and his crew did go ahead and run a permanent temporary type line to help supply some pressure to the general area. Our temporary line just wasn't pressurizing enough, so they've done a good job of trying to put in some C nine hundred pipe to just try to help. And with respect to the Cove, not to be too terribly, I guess, discouraged, I will tell y'all that the track that we are on and were on is as expedited as we possibly can with respect to this type of project. Turnip Seed will be receiving the resolution tomorrow. That in effect allows them to draw up the contracts to send out to the contractor of the Cove project. So two to three weeks, they'll return it. We're going to be up on the July fourth holidays. Hopefully, the, the city won't have too much problems with the contracts. We can reschedule and review those. But in the most, you know, expedited way, even if we shave a couple of weeks off from the identified pre-construction meeting of July the nineteenth, we're still in that July fourth type week. So what have we really gained? So it is just a very odd season, and our hope is that once we tell the contractor that, yes, you are the authorized tomorrow, they can go ahead and obtain the materials. There is about a four to six week delay, so they're hoping that construction can start around September. So beyond that, that's about as expedited as we can do. As David referenced, we are very thankful for the county's ability to help that area since our finished line and the raw water line were damaged in the storm. I believe Lonnie's having pretty regular meetings with FEMA GMA with regards to what funding we're going to get on that project. But at this moment, the money is kind of a sidebar. We're just moving forward to get it done as quickly as possible. So that's about the best we can hope for this month.
So one clarification, please, on Jeanette Drive?
Yes, sir.
I've had some questions asked about when we might start construction on that project. Is there any projection that we can give, like if we'll start in... Yeah, and when will we complete?
Not sure. I hate to speculate, other than hopefully within sixty days, we'll get our design. EXP is a pre-qualified engineering firm from GDOT. We did receive the funding commitment from GDOT of about a hundred and forty thousand dollars of the total two forty. So we are reliant on that expertise, but unfortunately, the only requirement is before the end of the year, we're to be let out. So I've been pushing as, as much as I can, but there is a reality of just labor shortage, material shortage, not that the materials play into this, but just getting, getting other vendors to, to move on stuff.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
When, when was the line updated on Jeanette? Was it recently last Wednesday?
Last Wednesday, David?
Yeah.
I think, yeah. We've been trying different methods, and David and I spoke, and we just went ahead and committed to putting in the permanent temporary to be better than what was.
Any further questions?
No, sir.
Discussion. Moving on to item N, consideration of advertising of alcohol license for Main Street. This is for the Taco Bar, which is located at sixty-one Main. Nothing to do with the sixty-one Main Restaurant. Council, at this point, I'm going to hand a motion to approve. Wait, let's let Lindsey talk to us about this first.
Sure is.
Yeah.
One last time. We're just asking for permission to advertise for the Taco Bar at sixty-one North Main Street so that they can get everything going, get open.
Make a motion to approve the application process began for the Taco Bar at the address sixty-one North Main Street.
Have a motion and a second to approve the application for the advertising of the alcohol license at sixty-one North Main for a Taco Bar. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both saying? And it's approved, Lindsey. Committee for Development Committee, that will be council members, Dr. Sonny Proctor and Dr. Sonny Proctor, since Kirk Rethan is not here today.
What's your opinion? Continues to be busy. Some exciting developments coming our way pretty soon. Some, some, one of them is public, but again, it was on the agenda tonight. I think that's going to be, the project's going to be amended and maybe a better. And then another one, I think, coming up that I'm not sure has been before, planning its own yet. But the state's looking at the impacts of those two, and they seem to be clicking along.
Thank you, sir. And Street and Parks, we'd be council members, Ann Snaby and John Bass.
We're still going pretty strong, trying to get the design in as far as those who can get us, and then this will be all done tonight. Over, stay off, it will probably help us a little bit by designing for these parks. So I would, we're still moving forward, we're trying to do it right, so it's going to take a little time.
Thank you, Mayor. Administration Committee, council members, Jim Lewinsky and Ann Snaby.
I'd like to thank council for the approval of moving on with the salary package we talked about this evening. I think it would be great benefit to our employees, and that, that maybe been a long time, so it's good to have that one completed tonight.
Yes, it is.
That's all I have.
I just want to reiterate what he said, but I want to thank the staff. They, they did a lot of work as well, trying to get all of our figures together to get this salary set and the ranges and everything. But also the employees for coming through the last couple of years, and we've worked tirelessly on this, and I know a lot of people don't think that, but we really have tried hard to get it to the point that we've got good pay for good employees.
Thank you. And Water, wastewater would be council members, John Bass and Dr. Sonny Proctor.
Uh, pretty consider, consider point size, time, committee meeting last week. Obviously, some of that showed up on our agenda tonight, which are fair amount of dollars, but also continue to work with our partners to the north, south, and west, not to mention the county, to look at opportunities for our finding natural resources. And continue to move along, kind of waiting on the PPD to tell us when we can keep moving on our wastewater treatment project. That's about it.
Like Sonny said, you know, we had a pretty good committee meeting, and we're staying in touch and dating. We appreciate you and Brandon working with us and keeping us up to date, and we appreciate everything the staff does, especially with all the weather that we had. Here we're getting some more, so hopefully it's going to go along the home.
You haven't mentioned all the water mains that have broken and...
Yeah.
And for some time, we've had a bit concerns about our infrastructure, whether we can manage it or not, and obviously, we are managing it. And so we're checking that hard work and planning.
Thank you. Thank you, Council members. Police and Fire Committee would be Kirk Rethan, who is not here, and Jim Lewinsky twice.
All right. Again, thanks, thank the council for approving the purchase of the tasers. The chief's reports will be included, they are included in your package, but Chief Lovell and Chief Roper will be giving those reports in a moment.
Thank you, Jim. Financial report, request our chief financial officer, Ben Redman, should you bring this to us?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You all have the finance reporting in your packets. At this point of the year, we should be looking at forty-one percent being on target. The revenues from the general fund is a little bit lower than that for the nine percent, but you have to keep in mind that there's some revenues that we get only once a year, and they come later, so that'll pick that up. A couple of the departments were a little above forty-one percent. Another group, Planting and Zoning, at seventy-six percent. Looking at water, they're doing well, forty-one percent, right on target with their revenue. And the only real excess was sewer administration, but that budget is only twenty-nine thousand, so it's not that bad. Sanitation is doing well, they're at forty-seven percent with revenue and thirty-six percent with expenses, so I'd like to see them be above water again here, maybe it'll happen. Looking at squashed, the two thousand fourteen squashed has eight hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. And if you recall, last year, we had the sidewalk project that we've been just posting that number for. And then in twenty-twenty squashed, we have four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And those, the last two nights they've been coming in above our projected of six thousand five thousand one, so we hope that continues. Did anyone have questions?
And Mr. Mayor, council, not to speak on Lonnie and his department, but mainly that is due to the expensing of the vehicle, because we received it, it was for last year's budget and the approval, but it's been extended this year, so just want to make sure. He's bigger than me.
He used to drive it this year, right?
Yeah, correct.
Right.
You have to put it in the year where you sent it.
So we'll ask for a lot of the year of starting development, thank you.
And remember that.
Mayor and council, first off, I want to thank you for what you're doing for the employees. Y'all talked about it for quite a while. I'm sure that it's going to come in handy, and they should all appreciate it very much. Thank you for that. As you heard in the audit, building its permit is up a hundred and eighty percent. I'd like to thank Shawna for keeping that paperwork in order and making sure that everything's getting filed like it should. As far as our building department, planting zoning, we issued fourteen building permits for a total of nearly twenty-four thousand dollars. They have bought a permit for the assisted living down at Gateway. That one permit was well over thirteen thousand. On-site inspections, we did sixty-five building inspections, eight soil erosion inspections, three stormwater inspections, and we conducted seven pre-planning meetings, and we had four new business licenses issued. Also had a meeting this morning down at the county office with DOT and county officials. They're going to be working on the lift station over at Airport, the new lift station that's going in, and they're going to be giving like a week's notice that they will deter all traffic from going around what they call the horseshoe area over there, and it will go straight across next to the new hangars. But they will give a week's notice so we can notify the public. DOT is also working on some turning lanes on five fifteen. They're going to do some expansions. I'm not sure exactly which areas. They're looking at where they crossroads, they're looking at fifty-three, maybe to make the turning lanes longer, but that'll be coming up for the public. And I did meet with Shawna myself, met with FEMA today on a Zoom meeting, and we're dividing everything. FEMA is putting everything in categories such as the emergency work we had at Cove Creek and the closing of the road. That's going to be the first two items we work on to see if we can get any reimbursement for that, and then we will move to the bigger projects, and we've got a two-hour meeting set up for next Monday, so that is moving forward as of today.
Thank you. And one question I have here is, I see some certificates for people. Here is a University of Georgia for Shawna Coleman, Planting and Zoning Workshop. Thank you for that. I want to recognize that. James Waters, Carl Benson, Institute of Government for Planting and Zoning Workshop. Lonnie Waters, City of Jasper has successfully completed a locally administered project, LAP manual, conducted by GDOT. That's a nice looking certificate, Lonnie. So I'm mentioning this because I think that everyone needs to understand. Here's Adam Howard with the Georgia Department of Transportation has done a planned development process, PDP, successfully completed, and he's also done a look at the LAP manual, same Adam Howard. Okay, so recognizing all of them for the continuing education they do for the City of Jasper, and thank them all.
Thank you, and these, these places are giving us information that we didn't have, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Lonnie. Chief Lovell.
I'll be sorry if you...
Chief, thank you so much for what you have done over the years for us, and I appreciate you not taking me outside.
Yeah, I know.
That would not go well for me, so thank you very much.
I know, I had an old dog, and it was October. I didn't know what it was.
It was October. I missed it by a month or so. I may want to...
Good evening, Mayor and council. City of Jasper Police Department, for the month of May, responding to eight hundred and ninety calls and nine-one-one center. Worked a sixty-five motor vehicle wreck, issued a toll of a hundred and eighty citations for following ten DUI, a hundred and sixteen, one seatbelt, one animal in a hot car, one, two uninsured motors, fifty-four miscellaneous violations, three suspended or revoked, two possession of marijuana, and one taxiing while driving. George Steco issued a toll of a hundred and six for grand total of two hundred and eighty-six in city court. Told a fifty-five state warrant we issued for the following, three criminal trespass, non-criminal trespass, family violence, teen child molestation, one cruelty to children second degree, possession of marijuana less than ounce, possession of marijuana over ounce felony, two shoplifting felony, six DUIs, one DUI and child endangerment, one trafficking methamphetamine, prohibited acts related to tobacco for minors, ten possession of controlled substances. prohibited acts related to tobacco for minors, 10 possession of controlled substance, 6 possession of drug-related objects, one escape, one simple battery on law enforcement, two simple battery, family violence, one obstruction, Mr. Mayor, one felony obstruction, one theft of service, goodness over the conduct, Mr. Mayor, and one public drunkenness, and one for no insurance, fire tag, bald tires, prowling, roaring, running stop signs, driving with no license, third maintain lane, speeding in failure to dim headlights. Miscellaneous calls responded to with 29 alarm calls, 12 domestic, 7 harassment, 12 trespassing and roaring, 26 suspicious activities, 11 domestic disputes investigated, zero burglary.
You're very nice. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
And our fire report from Chief Steve Rutter, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Before the month of May, the city's fire department responded to 137 calls of unstructured fires, commercial or residential. One vehicle fire, one grass and brush fire, 18 automobile accidents with injuries. Ninety-seven emergency medical responses, and 20 other calls. As of the end of the month, it was 591 for the year. Fire inspection office looked at four sets of plans and conducted 30, 22 inspections. Also, a note to finalize our mold remediation issue that we had. We have ordered a turnup gear extractor, which is an industrial-sized washing machine that washes firebait and gear, remove carcinogens and chemicals from the turnup gear. Makes it safe for the guys to wear it, and it extends the life of the turnup gear. We've also ordered lockers. We've been able to move some office space around. We've ordered lockers. They're going to be able to move the guys' linen and uniforms and stuff out of the bay with a diesel engine in the building corner. All that's in the process.
Good, good. Thank you. Thank you. And ladies and gentlemen, council, I would entertain a motion for adjournment this time. And second, please. We stand adjourned. Now, it is customary to have anyone inside, anyone inside to come forward if they have anything to address to our council. And before we walk out of here, then I extend that invitation to all of you. If not, let's go home, folks.